Good afternoon, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, before we get into our business on the agenda, I would like to announce that we are very close to finalizing a deal on the Melp property. I believe we've got the majority of the issues and the price worked out, and we will be discussing it at our work session on September 23rd. So I just wanted to let that be known, and everyone can stay tuned for that. But we're looking forward to making progress on that front. All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to go into special session to introduce ordinances related to Catalyst Project Number Eight, amending chapters 232 and 233. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of going into special session, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. We'll now be in our 49th special session. The first item is the introduction of an ordinance. But maybe, I'm gonna turn it over to staff and see if he wants to say anything before we move forward with discussion.
Well, we have Paul and Kathy here. Should there be any questions during the discussion period? So one of the... To have the motion. Staff, put your questions.
All right. So at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move from Mayor and City Council to introduce an ordinance to amend the code in City of Pecorstown, Chapter 232 vacant commercial structures. Specifically, the amendments will, one, apply the ordinance throughout the city; two, amend the license fee charge charging a higher amount on blighted vacant structures; three, implement a registration and inspection schedule, which establishes the first priority of blighted vacant structures; four, require certificate of property insurance; five, establish certain crime prevention through environmental design standards. These amendments are consistent with the city's vision and commitment for housing in neighborhoods in the community center plan.
Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Metzner, and a second by Ms. Nye. Any discussion?
A couple minor items. The assurances related to the active vacant structure. I think Lou brought that issue up.
Assurance?
The assurances as it relates to active vacant structures. I know it's somebody that's really, you know... I see that the month period has changed. I'm just trying to correlate extending the months of vacancy with, you know, the extended period in which structures may find themselves in a vacant status.
No, we expanded to six months.
Okay.
I had more of an issue in the residential than the commercial one, because this has been in existence throughout the commercial...
Six months for commercial, twelve months for residential.
Right.
Yeah, I just, like I said, I don't see them as suffering any different fate in economic conditions, you know what I mean? As it applies to that active space or finding reoccupancy, so...
Any other discussion, questions? And I think one of the things that came up in the discussion was, you know... Well, I guess that more pertains to the residential structure, so maybe I'll just wait till we discuss that. Any other discussion on this motion? All those in favor of the motion made by Mr. Metzner, and a second by Ms. Nye, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the ordinance is introduced. The next item is the vacant residential structures ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the Mayor and City Council to introduce an ordinance to amend the city of Pecorstown's Chapter 232 vacant residential structures. This is Chapter 233 vacant residential structures. Specifically, the amendments will, one, amend the license fee to charge a higher amount for blighted vacant structures; two, implement a registration inspection schedule, which establishes blighted vacant structures as the first priority; three, require certificate of property insurance; four, establish certain crime prevention through environmental design standards. And these amendments are consistent with the city's vision and commitment for housing in neighborhoods in the community center plan.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. John, I know the answer to this question before I asked it, but I really want this answer put out there because... Since I've been on council, there have been several houses in Pecorstown condemned for various reasons. It's likely that the passage of this legislation will increase the number of houses that are condemned.
Mike, Mike's not on. It's not on.
It's likely that this legislation will increase the number of houses that are condemned in the future. I think, the way I read it, and the condition of some of the houses I know about within the city. That being the case, how does this piece of legislation fit in with condemnation?
The vacant structure ordinance, as it's presented here tonight, properties that are condemned or condemned-able would immediately come into the program. And that would trigger both an interior and exterior inspection of the property.
And therefore, the people would have to register and pay the necessary fees to register?
Yes, sir.
Immediately?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's the way it should be, I believe. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Indeed, any other discussion?
On the section as it relates to the crime prevention through environmental design, as it applies to the residential structures, I'm becoming a bit more accepting as it applies to the non-residential in terms of things like dusted-on lighting at entry doors. And, but I still have some concern with the degree of vagueness to which some of the language is written. If you look at Item B, I mean, it says, "Doors not capable of deadbolt locks shall be secured in an approved manner." Who will make that determination?
Be the inspectors to make the determination, because it would be basically tested to make sure it just couldn't be turned open and walked into.
So what's an approved manner?
It all depends on the circumstance. It could be some sort of two-by-four on the other side, prevent someone from opening it up. It could be screwing the door closed. It could be all sorts of different scenarios. Just a way so that the property is not be able to be accessed if it doesn't have a deadbolt lock.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'm thinking of some of the more historic structures, historic residential structures in town. I just can't imagine telling someone they've gotta screw into a doorway or screw, you know, an old door closed.
And that's purpose of the line there where it's where, if it doesn't have a deadbolt, we don't want someone taking a historic door and trying to put a deadbolt into a historic door, so using some alternative method to actually secure the door.
I'm assuming we don't want to screw in two-by-fours into the woodwork framing either.
Right, we want to keep everything preserved, but also keep it safe and secure.
And can you describe where it states the windows have lift and slide protection? I'm assuming that means the ability to lock the windows down either from the side or the top.
Correct.
Doesn't have to be, they have to be engaged, just that they have to have it, right? Okay. And, well, I still have some issue with who's gonna define what a clear view of the structure from the sidewalk is as it applies to vegetation. You know, I can think of any number of homes in my neighborhood where they've got, you know, growth that I wouldn't go ask them to cut back or cut down because, you know...
But this is just for vacant structures.
I know, but at some point, any one of these structures could be vacant.
Right.
We've come down to a reasonableness issue, too. We're not thinking that we would tell people who go out there with a chainsaw and completely, you know, level things, but just a matter of whether or not neighbors or cruising police officers can get a good view into the property to make sure people aren't vandalizing.
I mean, I can think of a home across the street from me where they have two ornamental trees that basically cover the entire front porch. You can't see, you can't see into it. It creates a privacy, because they're on Virginia Avenue, and they enjoy that privacy between the street and the home. I'm just curious, you know, how that would play out if it was a vacant structure, you know, it was deemed not to be able to be seen appropriately from the street. I'm assuming we wouldn't go in and say, "You've gotta cut all the branches up to nine feet high so we can see the front door." And I think that has an impact on, you know, the integrity of the property in that specific instance, where it does create that privacy that somebody may want from a busy street like that when that home does, you know, transfer ownership.
Good thing about trees is they're like hair. In most cases, it grows back.
And the reason why we have what you are deeming vagueness is so that we couldn't do case-by-case, rather than just saying everything shall be limbed up to seven feet or dropped down to three feet, which was something we were contemplating originally, but we thought that was too rigid, that needed to have flexibility.
And so ultimately, it would be up to the inspector working on that case to decide what's approved or what's a clear view or what's reasonable in that case.
Right.
They'd be using their discretion on each case, case-by-case basis.
Any other discussion? One of the things that I was mentioning earlier is there was a concern that we would be fining folks who are in the process of foreclosure or, you know, otherwise somehow creating a burden for those people who are already obviously going through some kind of difficulty. And I think, in talking about it earlier with John, that really has an implication for other policies, too. So it'll probably be something for future discussion that we come back on a policy level to say, you know, that we'll always be fining banking institutions and not individuals who might hold a deed on a foreclosed property or something like that. So I guess that'll be an item for future discussion.
Yes, if I could comment on that briefly. That was a concern that Councilmember Metzner had brought up. In the memo that we presented to you today and in the ordinances to be introduced today, that provision is not in the ordinance. In discussion with both legal counsel and with staff, we thought we would better meet the will of this body by developing a policy directing staff with enforcement capability through municipal infraction citations on properties, whether they're vacant or occupied, because there's foreclosed properties where the owners are still occupying the properties, that it would, instead of going through every ordinance, the weed ordinance, the nuisance abatement ordinance, instead of going through all the ordinances and adding that section, develop a policy, present that policy here to the mayor and council, and have it as a policy that if a property is in foreclosure, that we would not issue fines against the owner record, but rather, if there's a need for issuance of fines, we would go after the financial institution. And it was staff's thought that that would meet, and more thoroughly meet, the will of the council.
Have we determined that that's a legal path that we can pursue to go after the financial institution? Is that an applicable legal procedure? Can we do that? Because I've heard in the past we couldn't do that.
We can, sir. The definition of owner that we've included not only in these ordinances, but in the property maintenance code includes anyone who has a financial interest in the property. And so we have issued municipal infraction citations against financial institutions, and the financial institutions have responded to those, sir.
And at some point, we are able to attach fines and penalties as a lien if we can't get a response, is that correct? Or we can attach fines and penalties as liens against the property?
Yes, sir.
If we do not get a response from whomever?
Yes, sir.
So that when it's eventually sold to a third party, that would come out of the settlement?
Yes, sir, and that happens as a matter of routine today.
And as it applies to the interior inspection of residential properties, how will that be conducted?
For the blighted properties, it would be at the initial registration. It would be both interior and exterior. But if it's the non-blighted, then it would be after they're in the program one year. Initially, it would just be exterior, but then after a year, at the renewal point, then it would be both.
So you come upon the renewal, the property is vacant. It's a residential structure. Who do you contact to gain access? And what prescribes the requirement to allow the city to access the interior of the property?
We would always contact who registered the property. They're acting as the responsible party. That's how we would gain access to the unit.
Okay, and this ordinance would require them to allow us to gain access to the interior of the home?
And we did confer with the city attorney, and he said that that would be legal.
I can give you a great example. I went to a native resource meeting last night on the summit at the City Department of Native Resources. There was a property event that was by a joint summit. They're spoiled up, but unfold. Our fire department, police will not go inside because it's unsafe. We do not know that. There wasn't some kind of process to allow inspection. If God forbid, a fire did start, if God forbid, a fire did start, a structure like that, and we send our first responders into an unsafe structure, then we've got even more serious issues on our hands. So I definitely see the value in that, especially for the blighted and uninhabitable properties.
And those that might be stealthily blight that you can't tell.
Right.
But they have had cave-ins or whatever.
Right, and apparently that particular property is leaning or something, and might present a threat to the neighboring properties, so... Any other discussion? Did our legal counsel, when I have, say a few words? Please come on up to the table, turn the microphone on.
I'll be good.
Here you go, okay, sure.
Good afternoon, I wanted to follow up on something that Mr. Estition brought up just a moment ago with respect to properties which are in foreclosure, because I think we do have an expansive definition of what is an owner under both statutes. But I don't think that we have the power to go after a lender when a property is in foreclosure. What the expansive definition permits is, if a property goes to foreclosure and is sold at foreclosure, typically, it's gonna be bought back by the lender. And what we have seen is that lenders will purchase these properties back, but not record the deed, because they don't want to be on the hook for consequences such as what these statutes imply. So in those situations, I think with our expansive definition, or more expansive definition of owner and being an equitable owner in the property, the lender, the mortgagie who buys the property back at foreclosure would be subject, or subjected to the requirements of the statute. But I don't think that the lender is prior to that point. So there's an evil that you still have that the statute doesn't capture, and I don't think that it can legally at this time. In other words, the owner who vacates the property, it's in foreclosure, but it has not been sold yet, I don't think we can go after the bank in that situation. We still have to go after the record owner. At such time as the foreclosure occurs and the sale has occurred, even before a new deed is recorded, I think then we could go after the purchaser, which, as I said, is likely to be the owner. Looks like you had a question, Mr. Alczek.
In other words, let's say that there's a violation of some code here, and let's say that we abate the issue. So let's say it's a two-year process. The foreclosed party remains the deed owner, even though the bank has taken it back, but then the bank goes, places on the market, and attempts to sell it to another buyer. That's when the deed would then change hands. But in that two-year period, let's say that that property has been abated seven times. And of that seven times, the total, let's say, is $400. Just as the city does for any other outstanding items, I believe that the city has the ability to place those items as a lien against the property, and those liens were required then to be settled at the settlement table, which then removes the person from the foreclosure process, being responsible for them and placing them directly in the lender's hands at settlement table and required to be settled before they can transfer it to another buyer.
Yeah, in theory, you could go after the lender prior to that, prior to the settlement table setting.
I'm talking about just going at it as it applies to the property. In other words, I don't care largely during that two-year process who held the deed or who held the mortgage. I think what our concern would be, especially for vacant structures, is that when that structure goes to the next end user, that that settlement occur at the settlement table before that next end user takes ownership, which is gonna have to be settled by the lender.
The two different issues. The issue, your problem about the abatement. And the abatement issue is one issue. But the problem I have now, and Jason and I, I'm not real familiar with actually how the foreclosures literally work. So I'm assuming what happens is people get far enough behind and the bank files a foreclosure proceeding? And they gets, what do they get initially? Do they get an order to ordering the people out of the home? How do the people get thrown out, do you know? If you don't know...
That's a good question, Mr. Metzner.
Because the issue that I have...
They're all different.
Well, the issue that is very concerning to me is... What I have a problem with is, we've all, as lawyers, have the experience and as citizens of people get into financial difficulty, they get foreclosed on, they have to vacate. Whether they stay locally or move to California or Oklahoma is all... Where are they gonna go? We are getting ready to pass a law that says these people have a legal requirement to register their place as a vacant structure, to pay a fee, and to do various other work on the home that has been foreclosed on, that they are no longer in and have no control over, but remain record title holders, right?
Well, no, we're saying at the moment that the sale occurs, and I'd have to, you know, define exactly when the sale... Because properties can be, you know, if you want to define the term foreclosure, a lender will file an action for foreclosure, and then there can be months, if not years, before anything occurs.
That's correct, and that's the problem I have. The people who have been foreclosed on, yeah. They, if they leave the home because they've been foreclosed on, and the bank makes a decision that it's gonna be ten months before they actually sell, this is the timeframe, the very concern I have. These people, these people, one, more than likely have no clue they're under some type of obligation to file and register their place as a vacant property. They don't have the money to, they don't care about it, because they aren't living there. And the last thing they're gonna do is start spending money on cutting trees down and putting in bolt locks. And my concern is, if the only people we have to go after during that timeframe are these people, I think we're defeated everything we're trying to do, because that's not the solution.
But if the action isn't taken, I presume through this process, we can take that action and abate the cost to the property.
Abatement's a whole different story.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, this ordinance is structured for that to occur. And it doesn't matter whether it's the bank or the foreclosed person or the city making it occur. Part of the process of this ordinance is to go out and say, "That's a blighted piece of property. You know what, I'm gonna send these notices to these parties who we believe may be the responsible parties." If any of those parties don't take action, we're not gonna let that grass get to three feet high. We're gonna go out at 12:00 and we're going to cut it, and we're gonna place that as an abatement against the property.
We have that right now on the books, right? We're abating properties right now. We don't need this statute to be able to do that. But what this statute does is require a whole new level of bureaucracy...
Of property maintenance.
Well, of bureaucracy, and I'm not saying that in a negative fashion, of requirement of registration, which requires registration, a fee for the registration, and certain other things that expecting people that have been foreclosed on and thrown out of their property to do is unrealistic. And then to say that we're going to fine them up to $500 a day, every day they don't register? And they're not even here, and they've been foreclosed on and have no interest in the property other than their names on the deed? I mean, I can't support that.
But Lou, we need a solution to deal with this property. So I'd like to hear from staff and the attorney, because I think what we're trying to do here is find a solution and not penalize people who have already... The bank has already said, "You're done." So, but we've gotta find a way here, so I'd like to hear from staff.
We'll go back and insult legal counsel. And we'll bring this back on the 23rd and put it on our work session to clarify exactly what the process will be.
I think they have had some responses here, I'd like to hear.
Can I just say, can I, and look, because there's people that I know that are going through foreclosure, and there's different cases, all right? And one specific is, is that the banks are saying, "Okay, your house is in foreclosure, you need now to go to mediation." This has been months down the road, okay? They're still living in their home, all right? If in fact mediation may not work out, or if the bank is saying, "Okay, you know what? Forget mediation, you may go, but we're gonna put it on the auction block." That's one, and that's what's gonna happen with one. Then there is another, that the person is living there, and the bank is saying, "Okay, I'll pay you $10,000 if you leave." Person's still living there. So how much of this do we actually know that are foreclosures, and the people have in fact left? How many are actually still living in their homes? That's where there's a whole gray area here.
They're still living in their homes, it wouldn't be vacant.
But you understand what I'm saying, but that's what I'm getting at. So how many? So a lot of shades of gray. So we wanna know...
Maybe even 50 of them.
Exactly how many, okay?
Okay, people, I can tell you, there are people living in their homes for over... At the peak of the foreclosures, from my domestic practice, people were living in nice homes for up to three years after the foreclosure. However, those aren't subject to a vacant structure law.
Correct, and I realize that, but I'm saying, how many of these are that are left, okay? Do we really know that the banks are responsible or the people are? What is the percentage? What are the percentages of the people that we're gonna go back to and say, "Okay, this is your responsibility now"?
Which is why I get back to an original offer to resolve that issue, because clearly, the banks are not going to be motivated to become the deed owners unless there is some motivating factor to do so. And if I recall correctly, in our... And if I recall correctly, in our discussions on the connection of utility service, upon vacating a property, the city goes out and removes the water meter. And what I proposed, I don't know, a year and a half ago, is that upon that vacating and be tied into this process or some process thereof, we would revoke that utility tap. And if you want to retain that utility tap, owner, lending institution, buyer, you will take deed ownership of the property within a certain timeframe. And if you don't, we'll revoke it, and you can come pay the $10,000 to get it back when you decide to reoccupy the property. In other words, there's got to be a motivating factor. I throw that out as one scenario. Any other discussion on the motion, which has been made by Mr. Mensner and seconded by Ms. Nye?
Which we're just introducing.
Right, we're just introducing. We will consult with legal counsel and bring this back for further discussion because it is, you know, complicated and certainly I think we all want to keep the individuals already going through financial hardships from enduring anymore, but we also want to achieve the goal of cleaning up these vacated, blighted properties and maintaining the safety and integrity of our neighborhoods, so.
Mr. Mayor, the only question I would have is, could we have staff get us an answer on how foreclosures actually work to walk us through the process? It's a rather specialized field, and if you don't do it, you don't know how it works, that's for sure.
I think that's reasonable. Okay, the a's and nays, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the ordinance is introduced, and we'll follow up with further discussion later down the road. Thank you, everybody, for that vigorous debate. Yes, sir.
I want to say thank you. I know that you and your staff have been working triple overtime to handle some of the problems that have come up over the last month, two months, whenever. Indeed, it's late as Saturday, I understand. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Kind of problems that Mrs. Nye was talking about. Lots of them.
All right, thanks. We'll enter into our work session agenda at this point. Before we do that, I do want to recognize Delegate Donahue for being here. Thank you, Delegate Donahue.
Hey, John.
And, uh, who's that? Hi, I know him.
Carbine and Act.
There you go. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation for the Forget Me Not program, and I'd like to invite Doug Flanagan forward to accept this proclamation. Hi, Doug. Good, how are you? This is a proclamation for Forget Me Not Month, September 2014. Whereas the Disabled Veteran, I'm sorry, the Disabled American Veterans Organization offers a variety of free services to disabled veterans and their families, and whereas each year, the Disabled American Veterans Organization holds a Forget Me Not Drive, where all proceeds raised are given to those disabled veterans and their families who are in need. And whereas the City of Hagerstown expresses their gratitude to those disabled veterans who valiantly fought to protect our freedom and preserve our way of life, now therefore be it resolved with the support of the City Council, I, David Geisberts, the mayor of the City of Hagerstown, Maryland, do hereby proclaim the month of September 14 as Forget Me Not Month, and I encourage all citizens to support the Forget Me Not Month Drive, which supports our local disabled veterans and their families. Doug, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate this. Yeah, I want to thank everybody in the county and in the city area. This tri-state area has always supported us in this Forget Me Not. Last year, we raised close to $12,000 at the storefronts. It went to your two way stations we have for the veterans who are here. They can't apply for a job, the homeless vets, without computers, so we bought them computers in both of those places. We also support the clinic here, and we send money down to Martinsburg still because a lot of us, like me, we use Martinsburg if we can't use a clinic here. And then we supported Vet Dogs in the prison where I retired from in 2010, and we also have Vet Dogs being trained by incarcerated veterans at MCTC now. So there's two programs. We have somebody helping us from Greencastle, the Riders, the American Legion Riders, their club, they had a concert there by Eli Young, was a headliner, and they raised some money for the Vet Dogs program as well. If you get, ever get a chance or you would like a chance to see one of the graduations at the prisons, I can give you my card or whatever you like, if you'd like to come for one of them, I might be able to get you an invite in one of the prisons if you haven't been there yet. It's really interesting because you see these incarcerated veterans, big tough inmates, and they have to give up their dog at graduation. It makes you kind of want to cry with them. And then at the end, they know they're losing their dog the next day, and just before they close the ceremony, they bring out their puppy to start training all over again. It's just, it's an awesome program. So if you give to the disabled American veterans, I assure you that a good chunk of that money's going to go to that to help PTSD, head injury, or also missing limbs or whatever, any type of veteran who needs a therapy dog has been designated to, or prescribed it actually by the VA, you're really helping a lot. And I'm really trying to get one of the local veterans here, if they'll step up and get themselves on a list, there's a couple of them, but they just, they're not, they're not ready for a dog yet, they say. But I'd love to see Washington County or Hagerstown, one of the veterans here, and there's plenty of them, like to see them get one of our vets trained by my veterans at MCI Hagerstown. And thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Doug.
And what you, what this area does here, it's amazing. There's no money, you were just talking about foreclosures. I went through that in Colorado back years ago. No money, people don't have a lot of money, and they're giving like that. It's just, it's awesome that this area here, Washington County and Hagerstown area can give like that, and I'm proud of you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work. Keep up the good work. I knew she was going to say that. Thank you. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Keep this for the next one, I think. I believe at this point, we're going to do a check presentation, is that right? For the bear sculpture, and the folks from the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts are here, our friends from the museum. Now, this is not the copy of the check you take to the bank, right?
Yes, I'm in the bank.
Okay, there we go. Here we are.
With the...
You want to say a few words?
Yeah. I know you do. With the bear sculpture, we have been fundraising, we've had private citizens, students, a number of people giving. And with that, a very big partner in this project has been the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts, not only for the bear sculpture, but the festival itself, and we'll talk, give a couple of words about that after the check presentation. And with that, I'm going to let Judith Wheeler and Rebecca Massey-Lane explain how they raised the money and what they did, and thank them for their efforts, because without individuals like Judith and the Museum of Fine Arts, we cannot do the projects that we do here.
Judy's next.
Thanks, Karen. So I'm Judy Wheeler, the Board of Trustees, Washington County Museum of Fine Arts, and I'm joined also by fellow trustees Al Martin and Marjorie Hobbs, and Board of Advisor member Pam Gauker, as well as Rebecca, the director of the museum. And back in the spring, through the sale of 500 raffle tickets to win a tabletop sculpture by artist Paul Reimer, the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts was able to raise its pledged amount of $2,500 for the public sculpture project, for the park project. So we're pleased today to finally give you the check for our pledged amount.
And I remember being there. I got to meet the artist. He was a Poolsville High School graduate.
That's correct, and I'm sorry you didn't win the sculpture. I think Rebecca sold the winning ticket.
Oh, there you go. But yeah, great, great job.
Yes, I've actually never won a raffle, but I was so pleased that one of my tickets won, and it was a good friend of the museum who actually lives in the Rockville area. So, but I just want to say how the museum has been so pleased and proud over these 83 years to have such a wonderful partnership with the City of Hagerstown in our artistic endeavors. We thank you for all that you've done to make the museum a reality and to keep it thriving, and we're so pleased to be able to give back in this way.
Well, keep up the good work. We're very proud of the work you do, and we just want to keep supporting you and help making public art a big focus of our parks and recreation. And I know, Rodney, do you want to say a few words about?
Well, I think you're going to talk about the event next week, so I just asked everybody to come out next Saturday. I'd like Karen to talk about that.
There you go.
We have a big day planned for City Park, and we've had so many partners, the Maryland State Arts Council, the Washington County Arts Council, the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts, the Valley Art Association, the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, the Washington County Historical Society. We have three featured events. The first is the opening ceremonies and the unveiling of the sculpture, and I think everyone will be very pleased with that project. We've had a number of sponsors come in. At noon then, the 275th Anniversary Commemoration Event at the Jonathan Hager House in partnership with the Washington County Historical Society. And we've been working with Amy Riley and Emily Conrad and everyone at the Parks and Recs. I think as the founders home, this is going to be a wonderful event. And then you'll be traveling again to the Mansion House Art Center for the 75th Anniversary of the Valley Art Association. So we have three major proclamations that day. We have three major events.
If you want to get up earlier, we have a bike ride with the mayor, 9:30.
And you have a bike ride. And not, and not only that, you will be having...
But wait, there's more.
There is more. We have art activities from 11:00 to 3:00 at the Museum of Fine Arts, the Hager House, the Mansion House Art Center. We have activities at the Hagerstown Railroad Museum. I'm going to pass to the mayor and council a flyer that we're sending out. And as we work with this, we were also looking for a partner to help underwrite some arts and crafts activities at the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts. And I'm pleased to announce that a new business in Hagerstown has stepped up to help us, and that is the After Hours Pediatrics. And that's a new pediatric urgent care center in Hagerstown, and it's on Eastern Boulevard, and they're going to be there at the event. So again, another partnership. And we have met monthly on this festival. We have been working together, and I think it's just another showcase of how the arts organizations and nonprofits really work together in Hagerstown. We work hand in hand to make the best for Hagerstown. I think this is just another showcase of that.
It'll be a great showcase of what I like to call our second arts and entertainment bubble in City Park, which includes a lot of those great things you just mentioned, not the least of which is our jewel of a museum.
And maybe next year, a trail to bring them both together.
That's right, the idea of linking the two arts and entertainment districts with that trail and development around it is certainly something we're continuing to work on.
And if anybody would still like to give, they can give me a call at my office, and we are still accepting donations. We're going to have a temporary sign the day of the event because, as Rodney knows, when we open something, people tend to give, and we won't do the permanent one until later. So thank you to the mayor and council for all their support for the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts, Judith Wheeler and their group, because I think these are the reasons to celebrate, and this is the excitement of Hagerstown.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Are we doing our official photo? Is that the next step? Come on in. Oh, you want us to turn? There you are. Thank you. Photogenic?
I think we're a stair step, aren't we? From tall to less tall to really short.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. You bet.
Oops, sorry.
Sorry.
I just made that connection.
Judy.
Next item on our agenda is an electronics equipment recycling event.
I'd like to introduce, well, you know, Pat Harity, who's the district manager for Waste Management, all the way down from Greencastle, and Phil Murphy, all the way here from Texas, to talk to us about, he's also with Waste Management, to talk to us about electronic recycling event. Thank you both for being here. In the past, the, probably the one request that we get the most for recycling enhancement to our existing program is electronics, and we're pleased to be able to put together an event because we got a grant from the Maryland Department of the Environment for $15,000. And these gentlemen have been very helpful to me to kind of organize an event around that kind of budget that we could put on for the citizens of Hagerstown and to try to collect recycle, electronics that are recyclable. So the event we're proposing, and we'd like to hear your feedback on this, is Saturday, November 15th, 10:00 to 2:00, down at Municipal Stadium, rain or shine. And the type of things that would be accepted would be, you know, the old TVs, the old VCRs, computers and such. So I'll turn it over to Phil if you have anything you'd like to add as far as, you've done many, many of these events, maybe you could describe a little bit more about them.
Sure, so we've done events nationally and probably have about 16 years' experience doing that. We've filled, literally filled football stadiums with e-waste collections before it was very fashionable, so we were kind of first mover there in that regard. And so we looked at your community, and it'll be very easy for us to help assist with this endeavor. It's a one-day event. We know the size of the community. We try to do modeling on what we expect to get, and that's always, you never know, really. There's no real science to it. We hope for the best and then build contingency behind that. So we'll help in all aspects of it relative to helping with publicizing the event and things like that. On the backend, on the recycling side, Waste Management is a signatory of the banned convention. We're one of the original signers of that treaty. So we, everything is first-class relative to how this stuff is processed afterwards. We hold all the best certificates in the United, in the United States, actually, in North America, to do this. So it'll be well-done from beginning to end.
And do you want to go over, you know, some of the things that people can bring? Because it's quite a list of, I wouldn't have ever thought of bringing old VCR tapes, but I know I have a whole bunch of them that I don't ever plan on using again, so any other things that maybe people might not think of that?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty regular list of commodities, computers, faxes, printers, photocopiers, VCRs, even office phones, cell phones, and televisions, monitors, stereos, et cetera. So some of the things that we don't take are large appliances. That's just a different thing. We're not going to deal with those, and any kind of household hazardous waste or liquids or things like that.
What about, you know, what I end up finding is I collect all these charging cords from all the cell phones I've had over the years.
We can take all that.
That kind of stuff you take too?
Sure.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Brewaker?
Yes, several, though you answered one about the end disposal, so. And I won't go into the details of that. Publicity. You know, unless the word gets out here somehow beyond just the city's website and beyond this meeting and so forth, you know, people will say, "I didn't know you were going to have that, and how did I miss it?" And we'll be as much complaining afterwards if we have it. How are we going to publicize this?
Well, we'd obviously use our social media and things that you mentioned. The one thing that we could do that's usually pretty effective is use the City Light utility bills. Since we have a little bit of time here, we could get a flyer together quickly and get it out to everybody that's a City Light customer, which isn't everybody in the city, but that would be one way we could get it out to...
Well, I suggest City, yeah, the City Light, but also if there's a billing period coming up, the city water and sewer customers, if, I think they have it broken out that way because the rates are different for city residents, and that would get even wider because there's people that don't get, you know, the city electric.
Yeah, it's just a matter of if we have enough time to do it.
Right, well, that's what I mean. It's November, right?
Right.
So if there's a billing cycle for the water and sewer for enough people, maybe you could just do that as well. And second of all, I suggest you put this specific list right in.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, there'll just be endless confusion as to what, the do's and don'ts, actually. In the... you could just do that as well. And second of all, I suggest you put this specific list right in.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, there'll just be endless confusion as to what, the do's and don'ts, actually. In the flyer, I'd incorporate that.
The event is free for city residents.
That's correct.
So will there be someone checking people's IDs? Or do they need to bring a phone bill?
That's what we anticipated on doing was just to say, somebody in this vehicle has to be a city resident and clearing them. Then they would kind of go through that checkpoint. Then they'd come to their checkpoint and see what they actually have and say, "That's good. That's good. I'm sorry that wasn't allowed."
Will non-city residents be able to recycle things there if they pay a fee? Or are we just turning, saying, "No, you can't recycle here"?
At this point, we were saying that they weren't. But I guess we could, again, it depends how much materials we get, I guess, is the issue.
Right. Yeah.
Is there an excellent amount? Can I bring a trailer?
Fifty computers. I'm just curious. I mean, I can see somebody flashing their residency card and-
Right. Fifty computers.
Yeah, emptying an office.
Yeah.
I think maybe you could limit it to households.
Yeah, it's geared toward residential.
Some of those things. It's really not-
And we've had experience before. I mean, when we were doing the general stuff.
The bulk trash, yeah.
Yeah.
I remember they would check ID.
Absolutely.
And why not dehumidify? I'm just curious. Why not dehumidifiers? Why does that one exclude it?
They have-
Oh, dehumidifiers are contain CFCs. So same as refrigerator.
Right.
Dehumidifiers.
Okay.
Yeah, they're wrong.
The hazardous material.
I recommend, again, on the flyer or whatever advertising we do, on the website, because you're going to put it on the website, I presume, you put households, you know, household disposal only. And then common sense at the site, you know, I mean, what household besides Kristin's is going to have a trailer loaded? But anyhow, do I have a further question if I could?
Please.
Timeframe. Is there any way we could, that's another thing people are going to say, "Well, you had it on Saturday, but I assumed that I could get there, you know, until 5 or 4 or whatever." 10 to 2 is, if somebody gets there at 9, you can tell them it's going to be at 10. Anyhow, is there a way of expanding those hours at all? That's all we can do for the money available?
We can do whatever you folks like.
Well, be careful.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, well.
Well, I mean, I was thinking of volunteers. I noticed there's no volunteer in there. You know, there's not a provision for volunteers. Would you guys be able to work with volunteers to help stretch the hours?
That's what we typically ask for is that the non-manual part of it, we like to handle the material. And we don't even let actually residents get out of their cars. They just pop the trunk and we take it out for them. So there's no lifting or safety issues. So we ask for volunteers to do non-manual things like direct traffic and things like that.
But I see on the spec sheet, the volunteer is not applicable. I wondered whether, you know, and if we had volunteers, could we stretch the, could we stretch the hours without adding to the cost? I mean, you know, there's a lot of people concerned about recycling. And I just wondered if maybe through the recycling task force members or whatever, if not them, maybe they know people. It just seems to me it's a worthy cause besides people just getting download stuff.
So like 10 to 4?
Well, it'd seem more reasonable to me, don't you think? 10 to 2 is four hours. I don't think-
Yeah, 4 hours is too short.
I think it's kind of short. I think usually when we had our disposal day, it was, it was like all day, wasn't it, as I recall?
Yeah.
Yeah, like all weekend or something. But if we could, you know, broaden that horizon to do a 10 to 4.
I'll work with these gentlemen.
Maybe we could work. I think that would be good. Or 9 to 3? I don't know. Whatever. It seems most logical. I think Kristin, that could be it too.
Try to get at least 6 hours.
Yeah. Yeah. If we could expand it to at least 6 hours.
Okay.
Without adding to the, you know, the cost or the life, you know, significantly to the cost.
Right.
And I've already talked about volunteers and you've talked about, so those were my comments.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Rodney, this is a really good effort. Is there some way we can attempt to do this yearly?
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, obviously, we can always go after this grant. But if we don't get the grant, we could work it into our budget to be able to do a similar-
Why don't we take a look at that?
Or even if it's bi-annually, you know, every 2 years or something, you know?
The people that I applied with the grant for the RMD seem very eager to get our application. And this is exactly what they want to fund. So hopefully going forward, if we have a good event and we have a good report to them, I think-
I just think a lot of it's going to be publicity and getting the word out there.
My experience with these repeated grants is if you can do a good job and show them you did a good job, they'll keep coming back.
And you mentioned something about the highest standards and certification. By that, do you mean we're not sending all this stuff over to some Chinese city where little kids are going to be picking apart electronics? Is that-
Exactly right, Mayor. The issue with all electronics is that there's some value, precious metals involved. There's also some very nasty stuff like lead, cadmium, mercury and things like that. So once you start tearing these things apart, that's what we have to deal with. And specifically, the ban convention does not allow, or our II certifications, which are E-Stuarts and R2/Rios, those are the highest standards in North America that we adhere to. And it does not allow illegal exportation of these known hazards. So we-
Thank you for clarifying that.
We're dealing with that in the continental U.S.
And I think it would help get volunteers if they knew that this was proper recycling that we're trying to do and not throwing these things into a landfill. Cold, throwing them in cold.
Okay. And I appreciate your efforts and thanks for coming all the way from Texas.
I'd say you all, but I'm originally from Chicago.
Oh, okay. There you go.
You're working on your accent.
I'm trying not to, sir.
Well, in that case, you, like my grandmother, you pronounce Hagerstown, Hagerstown. That's the Chicago accent, right? Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good stuff. All right. Something even more fun, deferred compensation plans update.
Small change in pace.
Yeah, right? Got a whole range of things to talk about here.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
Actually, I think in keeping with-
Can you pull the microphone a little closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think in keeping with the overall theme for the, this evening, we're actually here tonight, I'm not here discussing budget and other items of interest. We're here actually with some exciting news, some enhancements and new opportunities and enhanced benefit package almost that we could offer to our employees. Last year, I think it might have been in August, Karen came before mayor and council and discussed the possibility of adding a 401A plan, a pension plan. This plan would be for those employees that were formerly within this Maryland state retirement pension system at a prior employer.
Who have retired, yes.
Who have retired and who are now here and working with the city of Hagerstown. Those employees are not eligible to re-enroll. So what we're going to do is offer this 401A benefit plan. It's a deferred compensation plan. We have worked at great length over the past year with our vendor, Great West, to actually incorporate this into our deferred compensation package. One of the things with our deferred compensation group is on the 401A. To actually add this, we're hoping that we can get this up and running by the end of the year. Some of the key things would be, we would offer this, it's totally optional. It's not mandatory. And it would be just for those employees, again, who cannot and are not eligible to re-enroll in Maryland state retirement here. This plan for the employees would not have a vesting period. It means that we would not require them to be here for 5 years or 7 years in order to receive a benefit from this plan. And the city of Hagerstown at this time, we're looking to contribute 3% of their annual salary. And that's a matching. So if somebody were to enroll in this plan and they wanted to put in 1% of their salary, that's actually what we would match. And just to give you some comparisons there, for Maryland state retirement system, currently employees contribute 7%, but we put in 9.73% of their salary compared to this, this plan. And last, I think one of the key things would be for the people who were to sign up for this, Great West, our plan sponsor, is making available to them the same portfolio and options as what is available to the people who participate in our 457B plan. So that's good. That's a great enhancement. While all this is occurring, it gave us an opportunity, as we've been working with Great West, to look at the way our current plan is structured. Again, the deferred compensation plan, the 457B, is optional. People are not required or mandated to participate. It is something that is 100% employee contributions. Again, not looking at making any changes there. But what we are looking to do is offer some additional enhancements. And some of the things that we can do is add some target date funds. And that just simply means people that are in a normal 401K plan are actually more familiar with this option. You sit, you sit down with Great West, they invest you in these target date planning. And what happens is you do this asset allocation across the investments. And as you turn different milestones, you do not actually have to do anything at all. Great West will move your, your investments and your portfolios for you. Again, it's very common. It's something that newer employees are actually asking for, something that they're already familiar with in other places.
This is the idea that when you're young, you sort of maybe invest in riskier-
You want to be more aggressive.
Right, more aggressive in your investments. And as you get older, you want to be more conservative. And so you-
Yes. So all these features and enhancements that we're talking about, again, there'd be no cost to the city. One of the other benefits of doing this is that if we move to this, the people who are participating, the employees are participating, will actually save on administrative fees. So immediately, we would be eliminating 75 basis points. And that's what they are currently paying on some of the existing options that they have.
So how many employees will be affected by this?
Hopefully. I think it's exciting. Again, it's, it's a way to enhance our benefit package without costing the city anything. The 401A plan is just a way for us to, I don't want to say-
Right. And those, right now, that includes 2 people would be eligible, basically. But for the 457, the enhancement option, that could be any regular full-time employee who's otherwise eligible to participate.
Correct. And again, totally optional. And we were just coming tonight to let you know, I think in August, when Karen originally mentioned this topic, I think there was excitement. And I think that there was enthusiasm for us to move this forward. So we just wanted to come back and provide you an update on where we are, kind of move forwards. And again, looking at doing all of this and making everything available to employees by the end of the year while working with Great West.
Well, I just want to reiterate the thanks that you have in your memo to the committee members who worked on this with you and-
Yes.
The time and dedication they put into it. Any questions or comments? Marty?
I know that there's no budget questions, but net fiscal impact, is there a net fiscal impact, estimated net fiscal impact?
Only the match up to 3% for possibly 2 employees, which-
A base annual salary.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I hear you. There is some net impact.
Very minimal.
But it's small. Okay. I can figure it.
Mr. Munson?
If somebody's retired from the state, presumably they have a deferred comp plan, which they may be drawing from, would this plan, would that have any effect on being a part of this A-plan that you're talking about?
I don't, as far as their eligibility to participate, I don't believe so. There, if they're still contributing though to the old plan, you may come into contribution limits. But that was something they would work with Great West on.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we've got our chief of police here to give us an update on a couple of things. Good evening, chief.
Good evening.
First thing is the curfew ordinance and enforcement strategy. This came up in a meeting, I think based on some citizen comments, and we wanted to put it on the agenda. Right. So here to have that conversation. I, in intervening time, I followed up with the chief. And he assures me that we do enforce the curfew ordinance we already have. But maybe you want to explain what that is and how you approach enforcement?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I thought I would just kind of hit the highlights of what our ordinance is and how we are enforcing it. And then we did do a little research on this as well. I looked at some other ordinances and some best practices across the country and also some studies that were out there. As you can imagine, there are studies that fall on both sides of this issue. So the highlights of our ordinance is that it's for under 16 years of age. It's 11 o'clock during the week and midnight on the weekends. So if you're 15 years old or under, and it's past 11 o'clock during a school night, you've got to be home. And if it's on midnight on the weekends, that'd be Friday night, Saturday night. So that, those are the highlights. It is a misdemeanor offense. So it's, it's not just a civil infraction. It was written as a misdemeanor offense with a $500 penalty. And it actually has a component in it that the parents can be held responsible as well and charged with misdemeanor crime as well if they're contributing to this. So in an instance where you have repeat runaway and the parents are doing absolutely nothing, it may reach a point where we charge a parent. So that's, that's the law as it's written. It's, it's pretty, it was updated several years ago. And it was updated in a manner to help us enforce it easily by writing a citation. The way we do enforce it is if we see somebody out, they'll get a verbal warning the first time around. The officers get to know these, these kids on their beat. They know which ones are actually causing trouble and which ones aren't. And so they'll, they'll pay a little more attention to the ones that are, that are causing us some problems. So they'll get a warning and then they'll get a, what we call a paper arrest, which is they fill out an arrest register on the child. They can transport the kid home and turn a child over to the parent. They sign off on it. And then that paperwork goes to the Department of Juvenile Services. All of our juvenile arrests go, go from our department to the juvenile services. They're also reviewed internally by one of our detectives. And our school resource officers also help us out on this because they know the kids the best. Oftentimes, the kids are giving us trouble on the street. They're giving them problems in the school as well. And then maybe our detective has seen their name come across on something else. So it's usually, it's a matter of who's drawing the most attention to themselves. In which cases, Department of Juvenile Services then moves for adjudication in court. Now, in talking to Rick Groudon and Todd Kern over at the Department of Juvenile Services, they, they do see some of these juvenile curfew violations by themselves come through. Not a lot. And, and I want to clarify that. A lot, a lot of our juvenile arrests, I took a look at our stats, and we, about 20% of our juvenile arrests occur after 11 o'clock at night. So they're charged with a variety of things. If, if there's no other crime taking place, then they're only hit with the curfew violation. In other words, that's the most minor one out of all the ones. But if they're caught breaking into cars, or they're caught getting in a fight, or they're caught damaging some property, those are the charges that get, that get, so you almost have to lump all of it together. If you lumped all of it together, we're, we're charging the juvenile about every other night for being out past curfew. So not with a curfew violation specific, but only if that's the, the last thing left. It's awful, it's awful labor-intensive. You can imagine. If we tried to go out and sweep the streets every night at 11:05, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. It would not work. And it would tie up our officers. So what we do, we do try to be selective about it. And it's been effective for us. It's, it's a good tool. I would recommend keeping this tool. And there are some ways you could enhance it. I'll share those with the council. But definitely a tool we need to keep, I think, in our toolbox. And it helps us, it helps us approach them. Without a curfew violation on the books, we would not have cause to get out of the car and approach some kid that looks minor in age and, and, you know, ask them for their identification on the street after this certain hour. We would, we wouldn't have that. So, and I actually talked to Mark Boyer about this as well. He helped write the, the rule as it is. He says, you know, that there are, there is a case law out there from Dallas that allows all these cities to have curfew ordinances. And that was upheld in the court system. It's an, out of Dallas. Kind of started all this trend towards this in a, in a study in Maryland about 11 or 12 years ago that was done, which our ordinance came from that model policy. So it has good roots. It's good, it's got a good legal basis. And basically, you have to show a governmental interest to have it. So I would present those facts to you. And as I just did, 20% of our kids we're locking up are, are out after 11 o'clock at night. We do have a governmental interest. That is significant amount to continue in having an ordinance. So that's number one, to keep it. Number two is how we're enforcing it. an ordinance. So that's number one, to keep it. Number two is how we're enforcing it. And Department of Juvenile Services, they handle it a couple of different ways. They'll do an informal hearing, first off, and put them on a 90-day restriction. The second time around, they'll assign community service. And the third time around, they'll move for court. Now, in order to keep the, the child from having a, a record, they do a juvenile diversion program where they assign them from the court, assign some extra duties. And as a one-time shot, if you blow that, then you're going to get a juvenile record, a criminal juvenile record. So, that, that's the, the track all the way through with, with juvenile curfews. In looking at some of the other ordinances, our ordinance, as I mentioned, starts at 15 and below. So it's under 16 years of age. All the other ordinances that we could locate through IACP, which is the International Association of Chiefs of Police, are 17 and below. So there's some room there to grow ours and, and collect the 16-year-olds into this project as well. And of course, there are many exceptions to being out legally, too. I didn't go over those. But you can legally be out on the street for various things, functions that you're involved with, or a parent, or, or some other duty. They're, they're laid out in our, in our law. And the other ones as well. And the other thing that kind of popped up was a notice being mailed to the parents after the fact. We don't do that now. We, we give them a written notice at the day it happened. But something that we could do even just as a policy, it wouldn't even necessarily have to be a rule change here, and just begin to mail letters out, follow-up letters to the parents, and give them a copy of this ordinance and let them know, hey, read the last page. You're on the hook, too. So, that's, that's kind of the, well, those are the highlights for, for the curfew. Oh, and I promised you a study. Here it is, Klein, 2011. It says that the conclusion was that curfews appear to have an important effect on criminal behavior of youth. And it has a positive note in curfews that they, they reduce violent crime and property crime. There's two important things here. They, all these studies look at not just the crime that you reduce, but that the likelihood that the kid's going to become a victim themselves. Because what happens is the younger kids start following the older kids, and they can get taken advantage of and get victimized themselves. And being out on the street, that's a little tougher to track because we usually only track, you know, who got beat up, you know, who got charged with the assault, not the, it's a little harder to pull the age of all the kids that got beat up, that sort of thing, that were victimized. So, anyway, curfews hit on both those things. They do reduce crime, and they do reduce the likelihood of, of having kids become victims and perpetuate the cycle. So, worth keeping.
I don't think you'll have any argument about that. I think, the question is how, if, whether or not we want to strengthen it. And let me just say, before we get into that discussion, no ordinance can replace good parenting.
Right.
People who are responsible parents don't have kids who are out violating curfews or causing trouble or any of that. So, I mean, that's unfortunate. That's the reality of our current society. But I do think it's a valuable ordinance, and would like to hear people's thoughts on some of the suggestions the chief made. Mr. Munson?
Couple of questions, chief. A gentleman that was here from Dewey Avenue, I believe, talked about repeating violations against his property and nearby properties, I believe, by presumably the same, the same teenagers. What's your experience, you know?
In dealing with that, responding to that?
Yes.
First off, we, we take the input from the residents. We have to know where the problem is, and he's done that with us. Then we respond up there. We also had our neighborhood officer stop and make contact with him and talk to him, kind of hone in on who, who are the problem kids. He was the one that mentioned the Sheetz Express, all the kids running through the neighborhood.
Right.
As well. So it, it's just a matter of drawing attention to that, and then sending officers in the area there and saying, this is what's occurring after school, and then this is what's occurring after curfew hours. And then again, they use the curfew, the rule to, to, you know, contact the kids if they're out after hours. So it's just, it's just a matter of, that's the area. And, you know, if you see somebody out, charge them if you can, and get them before juvenile services. And it's just this layering up effect. Maybe it's a curfew violation, or maybe it's a disorderly conduct. They're all, you know, minor infractions, but they add up quick. And, and hopefully, the goal then is for us, through our detective, Detective Koye can do this, I'm sorry, Fliegel will do this for us, is contact Department of Juvenile Services and say, we need special attention on this one. Can you get this one before the court? And, and kind of skip the first couple of processes. And here's a problem in school. Here's a problem in this up on Dewey Avenue. Put them together, and, and we'd like you to take this case to court.
If it's a curfew violation, then the first time, the kid is taken directly home to his parents, right? His or her parents?
They can. We don't, I, I wouldn't say that we always transport the kids home. But they can, they can just say, they can identify them and tell them to go home, or we can transport them home.
Okay.
It's, it's a matter of how many, how much, what's going on at the time.
I understand.
Sometimes, it's, it's get all the names, and then, and then stop by the house later on and charge them all.
Okay. Then, if you accompany them home, do they go home in handcuffs?
No, we, we try not to put them in handcuffs for this.
Now, suppose they, they go home, and, and the gentleman who was here specifically mentioned this, they walk in one door, and then they walk out the, the back door, and they're back out on the street again 15 minutes later. What, can you comment on that?
Sure. That, that's the second part of our ordinance. At that point, when you find the, the child, we're transporting them back home. And we charge them a second offense. And then you put mom on a warning that, you know, read the second part of the ordinance here. You can be charged as well. So they can make a choice right then to either charge mom, get a criminal summons for her, or just give her a warning that, and, you know, that she could be in violation of it. Those kinds of cases, and email, what happens is the officer on the street gets sick of it, too. So they email the juvenile detective that's overseeing these and saying, hey, get ahold of Department of Juvenile Services for me on this kid. It's, he's causing me a problem on my beat.
Okay. And my final question is, why wouldn't it be more appropriate, under at least some circumstances, to take some, some of these juvenile offenders directly to the police station and let mom and dad come to the police station and pick them up?
It could. And that, that can be done. That can be done. What we would find is that we, we don't open, our lobby is not open 24 hours a day. So that would take the officer off the street as well. And another one, we have to have two people in the building. So the supervisor has to come in off the street, and then the officer, they have to sit in the building with this juvenile until they get ahold of mom. And invariably, the child's going to forget what their mom's phone number is. So we end up either transporting them home or calling somebody else. And it takes time. Usually, this is in the busy time of our day, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, when we need every officer on the street. So, the sergeant's probably not going to tolerate that. The sergeant's going to say, get the kid out of here, get him home, and charge, charge him there, and, and let him go. Nobody, the, the kids are not getting detained by Department of Juvenile Services. Those days are long, long gone where they would take and put them in juvenile holdover. We can, we can barely get that done for serious crimes. And it's not because of our Department of Juvenile Services doesn't want to. It's, it's state, it's the state regulations that all Department of Juvenile Services flies under. Our local Department of Juvenile Services are fantastic folks. But their hands are tied, and there's limited space to put these kids, so.
I understand what the willingness or the desire to, you know, book some of these kids, if you will. But working in school, and from a school perspective, what I've found is that when it comes to parent responsibility, you don't change the kid's behavior unless you somehow inconvenience the parents. You know, like, so if they have to leave work to come to a meeting at school to address their kid's behavior, then we might see some behavior change by the kid. What other ways can we, maybe besides getting the parents, you know, whether it's the follow-up letter, whatever, how can we increase parental responsibility in this with regard to this?
Right. Well, they are getting inconvenienced, just maybe not that night. Department of Juvenile Services follows up on every single one of them. And they call the child and the parent in for an informal hearing. So mom must show up. So that's where they're getting inconvenienced. You know, wait a minute, I got to go down.
Do whatever to, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's where most of the inconvenience would take place for them.
And that happens with every curfew violation that there's.
There's an informal.
Even the first one, they would have an informal hearing.
That's, that's the first step.
Okay. Any other questions or feedback?
No, I just would like for all council members to have a copy of the Baltimore City ordinance. Because in that, Mr. Hyatt that was in here, Hyatt Hewitt, Hyatt, had specifically pointed out 14 years and, and under, all right, that curfew was at 9 o'clock. Now, I realize Baltimore City's a lot larger than ours. But we are growing with a lot of juveniles that are problems.
Yeah, it is.
And, you know, for that, that's, Mark, and, you know, and I know the frustration of the police officers, because they are frustrated if they do, or if they are in a position of taking them home. And then, here we go, they're right out the back door, you know? I mean, I've talked to them, and I know this. But what are we going to do? It, you know, I get from not only the North End, I get also from the East End. And they're very upset. Because the juveniles, it's beginning to be even more so, because we have a lot more. And how do we handle it? And that's why every council member needs to look at Baltimore City's ordinance.
And Baltimore is doing a lot, not just with their curfew, but they're, they're realizing, these kids are on the street for a reason.
Yeah.
So whether it's because they have a home life that's not safe, or.
And, and there is a lot.
You know, so they're actually building, you know, curfew centers for kids to report to.
And that's exactly right. Because then, then right off, we're hearing, can't afford that, can't afford that here, okay? But I don't know. What's it going to take? I don't know.
Mayor, I suggested an email probably six months, eight months ago, after a meeting with the library folks, that especially hearing what was going on with the library in our downtown with, with these children, and, and a lot of them are ages well under 16, running rampant to downtown in the library, clearly without any parental supervision at all. It's what you said, and I think the chief will probably agree with me, just, just trying to deal with the symptoms, so to speak, instead of the underlying cause is not going to ultimately solve the problem. It will help it. And, and that's why I thought, and I still think, and want to discuss it more with the library folks, that what you're looking at, I would love to see a weekend that involves Department of Social Services, Department of Juvenile Services, Hagerstown City Police, and whatever other appropriate agencies are there in specific areas to do what you're saying, is to not only say, okay, you being out is a problem, but why are you out at this hour doing this? And, and I understand that ultimately, that's what the system allegedly has set up to try to establish the juvenile system. But well, I, I would think a concentrated effort over a weekend involving all these agencies coming together in our downtown, assuming the problem is as bad as the people at the library tell me it is. And that's not for me to decide. I'm not down there every night at 9 o'clock. But I, I would love to see an approach like that that involves much more than just the enforcement, but trying to get to the root cause.
The wraparound.
And charging the parents right off the bat doesn't, doesn't work either. And that's why the chief isn't doing it. Because the system is so overwhelmed with everything.
And I'm not saying parent responsibility. The only way you get that is to charge people.
No, no, I know you're not.
Somehow, we have to.
But there's a lot of people who would like to see that done. And that's not the solution.
I will say about the library, I think the library has done a really good job of reaching out to the community in the neighborhood. And I know the mediation center has helped a lot of this.
Good.
But they had a.
Things may have changed since.
Community dinner recently where almost 200 people came. It was a meeting. And so, maybe that avenue or the venue would be the best way to bring in those agencies you just described to sort of educate the community on what the standards are and what resources are out there if they need help.
And along that line, you know, I, I was never a fan of mail call. So, this is better than mail call that we have now. But there are some legitimate questions that are asked that I also find interesting. And that is the board indicating we have, what, 550 homeless children in the county. And you constantly be seeing the questions asked, where do they live? And of course, I think that fits in with this curfew issue. Where are the homeless children living? I don't know.
A lot of them with, with other relatives.
Shared housing.
Yes, shared housing.
Kinship care.
So I guess what you're talking about is what's the definition?
I mean, that, yes, it is. It is. And I know that.
I don't mean to be sarcastic. Because when people see homeless, they think people don't have a place that they live.
Well, they don't. As a fix address, correct. Yeah.
But I know in school, you know, we have different levels. Like, if you're living with relatives, that's shared housing. If your parents are incarcerated.
And that's, that's an answer to a question.
You're living with your aunt, that's kinship care.
That's considered homeless. Okay.
I don't, I don't, well, I don't necessarily think that's considered homeless. So I, I agree with you that it's an, I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah. Because, I mean, that's what was discussed at one of our, our CAC meetings. You know, when you have a board, you know, that is sitting there, and somebody, it's a representative from the school, and they will give you the figures. And, you know, the question was raised, you know, well, where are they? And I'm not saying that some of those aren't living out of vehicles. But for the most part, they in fact are living with either relatives or friends. They are doubling, quadrupling, whatever it takes to be able to find a, a roof over their heads.
Mr. Brubaker?
I agree with Penny. I think that, I'm going to say it a different way. I think 11 is awfully late for kids 15 and under on Sunday, or, I say, the school nights in particular. School nights in particular. I mean, I, you know, why is a kid out the night before, you know, he's supposed to be somewhere until 11 o'clock for that age? Do you have a reaction to that?
Yeah.
Studies or anything?
Yeah, the, the studies do not show, they don't differentiate, like the Baltimore model now has 14 and under at 9 o'clock. That's true, that, that, we, we did have that. But there are no studies that show the impact. I mean, common sense would tell you that, that should, that should help. And I think that's the, the trend Baltimore's going in. But there's nothing to support it in the, in the research yet. Plenty of support for the 17 and under, or under 17, sorry, under 17 model. And, and it makes a lot of common sense to, to lower the time. But there aren't any, any studies on lowering that time. And especially, as far as Baltimore took it with the under 14 and the 9 o'clock at night. I mean, I agree with, you know, parenting model, that's a good parenting model to have. But, you know, enforcement model, there's just nothing to statistically support yet. In, in talking to Mark Boyer, the, the idea there would be, let's give Baltimore a chance to vet this out. It's brand new. Let's make sure that they can show a governmental interest in, in, in doing this, and it's going to legally hold up. But as far as the fourth, the two-tiered system, where you can be out 16 to 11 o'clock, but under 14, you have to be in at 9.
You know, that makes a whole lot of sense, except for one thing. And you talk about studies. I, I would love to see our own study. And I don't want to create more work for our police department than they have. So I'm not asking for anybody to go backwards on this. But going forwards, the good question is, how many 14 to 16-year-olds are getting charged with juvenile offenses prior to 9:00 PM? I mean, that's, that's the way we would want to look at it, to me.
Or after 9:00 PM.
Or after 9:00 PM, yeah, excuse me. If we find that that isn't an issue, then it isn't an issue. I, it's hard for me to fathom, not talking about summer, but on school nights, I agree with you. It's hard to fathom that that, 14, that that's not reasonable, or that 11 on a school night. And, and again, I differentiate between the weeknights, as you have, and a school night. I mean, in, in the summertime at 9 o'clock, it's still laid out almost sometimes. But the.
Chief, are you suggesting that we consider the 17-year-old provision, that we increase the age to 16 and below?
Yeah, I think that's one step that the council could take now. And it fits all the other ordinances that we saw, and it fits the studies that are out there. Remember, there is many, there are more studies that say it has no effect on, on anything. But, you know, I have to give you both sides of the fence. But yeah.
Is it just 17 or none?
So, under, under 17, in other words, you, you pick up the 16-year-old, would, would fit all the other model policies that seem to be in all the major cities that are out, and the studies that, that went with them. So that's, that's one step towards expanding our curfew. It'd be another big step to go to the Baltimore model. And I would just suggest, maybe we hold off on that. Maybe we look at, at doing some of our own data mining to see if we can support it. Again, our, our council told me, we're going to need to really support that, that, because that, that's where the, the courts challenge these things. And it's, it'd be better to let Baltimore fight this in the court.
I just said, I think it would be better to see the, the ordinance. Because I know when I was told about it, it really was something. And, you know, the, the people, their citizens that are out there in that end of town are very much concerned, all right? Because with some of the kids, you can't get to them. You just can't reach them. And, you know, I. And, you know, I don't know, Mark, I wish I had the answers, but when I have to look at, and not all of the kids that are in the alternative school as being in a high number, and now since, I don't know if it's state or if it's federal government, who that said no, no child will be expelled from school, I don't know what's gonna now happen with the alternative school versus the regular school. And if we're having this much problem, and again, I don't know how many are there from the city, or how many are from the county, but obviously, if there are a problem in school, there are a problem out of school as well. And I mean, this is where most of this is coming, you know? And, and again, we've got so much that has moved into the area that is an unknown. And, you know, the people are very, very upset and very concerned about it. And I think that was the reason, you know, that the gentleman from Dewey, and, you know, other neighbors as well are out there that are very concerned. And, you know, it's not only destruction of property, it's just, you know, they, they verbally can go at you, and it just doesn't, you know?
And, but before we push too far with the, with the 14-year-old as well...
Oh, I'm not, I'm not pushing, I'm just saying, look...
I'm, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to say, staffing's gonna be a problem for us.
Well, I know that, and that, and that by looking at it.
To do that Baltimore model?
I knew that, correct.
And you know that.
Well, I know that.
To staff a center, they run a van, a pickup van that picks everybody up, and then they staff a center 24 hours a day.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. Council does need to look at, because that's the, that's the example that the gentleman on Dewey said, why is it that we cannot do, okay, something like this? So, you know, again, you know, it's gonna be where the impact is the most as to what comes down. But I just, you know, I think that it's worth looking at, and that's why I'd like for them just to see it, because it really was an eye-opener.
I, I like the idea of, of Council Metzer had about trying to bring in social services, Department of Juvenile Services around, let, let's call them that, you know, the, the top 10, 15 kids that we're running into all the time. Those kids are doing more than just a curfew violation, Department of Juvenile Services involved. But then there's, there's always those kids that, they got that first curfew violation, right now, just Department of Juvenile Services looks at that. And are there gaps out there in our community that could be picking up these kids and helping out and kind of coming around them, sure, certainly, I think that's a great, a great initiative to take for the council here to, to try to close some of those gaps.
It's worthy of further investigation.
Because you can't do it all with a badge, you just can't.
No, no. But, you know, I, I know with the gentleman from off of Dewey, with the one individual that they have had a problem with, you know, when you go on, and you go on Facebook, the gentleman do any of this stuff, and, you know, the whole fear factor for a lot of these people that live out here, that are older people, that, you know, they have, when you friend someone, and you're looking at over 100 of these kids, and you're thinking, "Okay, so what am I looking at here? Am I looking at that if this kid knows that I've turned him into the police, do I have then that threat of all of the ones that are friending him on Facebook?" That's the fear factor anymore, Mark.
That's what they're counting on.
And that's exactly what they're counting on.
They're counting on intimidation.
That's exactly what they're counting on. And after just seeing what happens just on the street, and not seeing it happening as destruction to property, that they're just going after one individual or two individuals when you have a grouping of more than 50, okay? I mean, you know, been there, seen that, so, yeah, it is a problem.
The juvenile problem is, is something we've been working with and, and focusing our, our school resource officers on this summer. We, we kind of assign a little case management model where if they had a juvenile got in trouble, but it was originally from their home school, that we let them know about it as well, because they, they know what's going on in school and off the campus. We're gonna continue with that, and we have some ideas to improve that in, in the future, here real soon, with, with improving how we're managing the juvenile issue with these quality-of-life type things that we're talking about here.
So, you mentioned something just now that made me think of memorandum of understanding that in Montgomery County, the police have with the schools, and that is if a student is charged with some kind of violent crime or something, some serious crime, that the police are obligated to let the school know.
We do that.
We have something in place.
We do that for every offense.
Okay.
Every offense with, with that.
Well, that's good. I think it's good for schools to know what they're dealing with. All right, now, I guess we could transition into downtown quality of life issues, these are, oh, just have another curfew issue?
Just a comment, because earlier in your presentation, you used the word selective. You said, "We are selective in how we enforce the curfew law." And I want to make sure, some of the papers sitting there, I think what we really mean is, is we're reasonable when we enforce the curfew law. I mean, I just, you know, we're certainly not out there targeting any specific kids in any specific neighborhoods, we're being reasonable when we go out and, and encounter situations.
That's right.
Regardless of the neighborhood, or, or the kid, or, or anything beyond the circumstances of the specific situation.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, a better way of saying it would be selective based on behavior, not based on any other factor.
Right, whether they're repeating their behavior or not.
Yeah.
Right, and I understand where Chris is coming from. I mean, I think you're absolutely right, our, our police, selective is, is a word that's used and can have various different meanings. And it's a lot easier to understand if you say, "Police are selective in enforcing disorderly conduct charges," because they could enforce it the first time, instead of saying, "On the fifth time, if you don't do what I'm telling you now..." See, I think that's more like what you're talking, selective, including the decision whether or not to transport a juvenile back home, or tell them to go home, and those things. But I totally understand what Chris is talking about.
It's a good point, yeah. All right, downtown quality of life issues. This has also been a subject of conversation, citizen comments and feedback, so.
Sure, if I, if I can, sort of quickly, we do have the remembrance in the park tonight at 6:30.
That's right.
I think we're all gonna try to get there.
That's right.
So, the downtown quality of life issues, I was asked to take a look at that specifically about the, the noise and what I included, did I include in your packet?
Yes.
Is, the two big, the two big issues downtown, you're trying to sit out, you're, you're trying to eat dinner, and along comes a really loud motorcycle who's just being excessively loud with, with the way they're riding their bike, and because it's a modified exhaust. So the, the state law says that you cannot modify your exhaust on a motorcycle or a car, those really loud motor exhaust systems that they pull in the car. It also goes on with the diesel motors, so for those that are driving around with the diesels, and they put the little microchip in the car, in the, in the engine that makes it puff all that smoke.
So you don't mind.
You can't do that either.
Don't mean it's broke.
Yes, you can't do that either. That, so that's right there in, in the handout that I gave you.
Really, could I call, there's some name for that they have now, like getting smoked or something like that.
Yeah. So, so those are, those are all charged on the state citation, a traffic ticket, and then also the noise amplification. So if you can hear the, the stereo, we sit in council meetings here, and they'll pull up out here at the traffic light, and you hear the boom, 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 if it's more than 50 feet away, coming from a car that's in transport, then it's not our city ordinance, it's the traffic law that we hit them with. So, we have, we have done some enforcement on, on the noise ordinance, we haven't done any specifically on the modified exhaust downtown, but what we do is we do seatbelt enforcement details, and they'll also do noise along with that, so that we will put a, a officer out maybe on foot and for about an hour or two, and look for seatbelt violations. They're also looking for noise violations in, in the downtown, and what I would suggest is that we could sort of step up that enforcement, especially during the dinner hours.
You got it.
You know, between five, six, seven o'clock at night, do some specific enforcement, we'll advertise it, I'll put it on our Facebook page and let people know, "Hey, we're gonna be out, if you really want a ticket, go ahead and do it." And, and, and be reasonable about it.
So the attached, these are state statutes.
State, yeah, they're traffic tickets that we write. So in other words, we don't need city ordinances for it.
Because it's already covered by state law.
We can just write a ticket.
How do you feel about laws on saggy pants, or not having your shirt on? I mean, is that even a practical consideration for us?
You know, we, I, I heard that, it was mentioned Annapolis had that, we looked around, we, I didn't find anything on that.
Right, I'd like to know.
You know, my personal feelings are that we don't get into that business at all.
Right, I mean, that's sort of like regulating good taste, which is not exactly what I think good, good government would be doing.
Yeah. If it's a particular person that, that's causing disturbance because they have their, their shirt off or their pants down, they're usually gonna be doing something else that we can, we can, you know, if they're really causing a problem. If you just don't like the look of them, then we, we're not in that, we're not in that business at all. You know, in fact, we protect that.
Right.
So, that's, that's not what we do. But I think our biggest, some, some ground we can gain would be some targeted enforcement, targeted times for the noise, for the pipes, and for the music, and we'll, we'll let everybody know we're doing it. So just, everybody be respectful about it. And if we're having a particular neighborhood, by the way, that's having this, the same problem, because you do have neighborhoods that, that do get overwhelmed with this type of behavior, either one of them, that, that's another detail we could put together specifically for a neighborhood.
I gotta tell you, chief, I was, my wife and I were driving, I guess it was about a week or two ago, and they're right at around Mulberry and Fairgrounds. There must have been 20, I wouldn't say they were motorcycles, they were more like scooters, and, you know, we saw them all there, and, and within three seconds, the next thing we saw were two police officers. Nobody that pulled over, nobody charged with anything, but clearly, it was a, a very positive thing. And, and the other thing I'll say is, I've said it many times about the lack of police presence downtown, you have changed that dramatically. I see police downtown all the time now, it's great seeing bicycles, but it's a, it's very different being downtown than it was six months ago, and I commend you, I know you're short-staffed, I mean, I know that's why that presence wasn't there, but to see the presence back downtown is a very positive thing.
Well, thank you, and just to add to that, this month, we're adding three more officers downtown, as they're coming out of training, we've already selected them, they know who they are, they're coming downtown. So, we're, we're gonna have a real good presence, we'll have just about twice as much as we've ever had downtown.
That's great, and you, you can tell, I mean, it's obvious.
Thank you, I'll pass that along.
Right, and visibility, visibility, it's like real states, location, location, location. I would say it's three Vs, but visibility.
That's everything downtown.
That's everything downtown.
It's all about prevention and, and making people feel comfortable.
Yep.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
And I understand, just in case everyone didn't know, we are pulling the last item, the MOU with the DEA off the agenda, and I assume that will be, you know, we'll work with the chief when that needs to be, but he requested that we pull that from the agenda, so. With that, we will move into city administrators' comments, and Mr. Liston is here, filling in for Mr. Zimmerman. Mayor, or council comments, who would like to begin tonight? Mr. Metzner, looks like he'd like to start.
That's fine, I, I only have one comment for future discussions, and not in the immediate future, but, you know, we did a lot of police discussions tonight, and we have a superb police force. I would predict, within the next decade, that every police force in this nation is going to have their police officers wearing cameras. And I think as a government, we would be very wise to start looking at that potential. In my opinion, based upon what I know about our system in Hagerstown, it would be much more to protect, to protect the police officers, and to make the criminal justice system much more fluid than it is right now. And one of the thought processes is, I may be wrong, but I would think if there's ever a time to be able to get grant money for that type of a program, it would probably be now. Having said that, I, I bring it up as something for future discussions and future thoughts, we have a whole lot of things more important than that to go on now, but I, I would like to see us look into the possibility, what the expense would be, and how it would work, and what the police perspective is on that. Thank you.
Ms. Nye?
I would just like to say thanks to Captain Langston and his staff, as well as Code, for a really bad problem on Hamilton Boulevard, and hopefully, we will soon get it all resolved. But I mean, it was a mess. But they got, Captain Langston was, was just outstanding, I mean, he pulled everybody together. And Code was there, Code has had a problem trying to just do whatever they need to do, and whatever, you know, they've done so far, but we'll see.
Thanks. Mr. Munson?
I'd like to simply reiterate what Penny just said, the problem was a mess, continues to be a mess, but not as bad because of Code and various other people who've been working on it. I believe the police probably have had to visit the place at least half a dozen or more times, just in recent days. So, thanks to all the people who were involved in that, and helping to get it straightened out, and, and I know, John, that they were your people, people that you supervise, and thank you for doing that.
Mr. Alshar?
Couple of items, the first is, I've provided everybody an email with a, an existing ordinance on the location of unattended donation containers. I think it's something we need to, we need to look at. There is certainly a proliferation of these types of containers, and I've noticed, even in our shopping centers, that it isn't, it used to be really just two larger entities that, that did this, and now it's growing and expanding into, you know, additional nonprofit or not-for-profit entities, both local and, and sort of broader. And while certainly some of them may exercise this process with good intention, if they cannot man them, all of their good intention is for naught for people that aren't going to use them properly. And that's just something with an unattended donation container that you can't, you can't control.
Well, not to mention that there's plenty of reputable organizations that do have people that will accept donations in town.
That, that are open and manned and accessible every day. The other is, and I don't usually do this, because it's outside of the city, but we all receive notification from Department of National Resources of events at Fort Frederick this weekend, which a lot of people don't go to anymore. But the other one I, I found more interesting, that I think deserves some public awareness, is, once a year, they open up the, the Woodmont Lodge, if you've never been there, it is a pretty cool place to visit, and it's not in the city, but all the same, it's in the county, and it speaks to some of our heritage activities.
And when is the Woodmont thing?
The Woodmont, I believe, September 14th.
Sunday?
Yep, September 14th, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's the only day that it's open to the public for the entire year, so, but it's, it's a pretty cool place. Also, I'd like to thank staff, I sent an email about some patch issues on Wilson Boulevard, I don't know if anybody else had the opportunity to run across them when they were, like, driving across potholes, they were associated with, I believe, some, some gas utility work, and they were temporary patches, but we've got, we've got to have a standard that these entities live up to, when, when they create this patchwork out of our streets, you know, as they're doing this work, because the only people that have to live with it are the people that live there and drive them every day. And one thing I always say when folks compare us with Frederick City is, you know, we, one thing we have going for us over Frederick City is our streets are just impactably better driving condition, and I like to keep them that way. And I think that the utilities that work within our right of way have, have an obligation to do so. The other is, you know, with the, one of the downsides of, of the advent of, you know, virtual media and the, the real-time process in which it encompasses is the unfortunate activities of Hager Street last night. And the only thing I'll say on that is, you know, as written and printed media attempt to keep up with those types of, of storylines and processes, we need to make sure that we're being as transparent with the public as we possibly can with our citizens that are affected, because if we are not, as real-time in our information provision to our citizens, they're gonna get all kinds of wrong information before we ever have an opportunity to provide the truth. So, you know, I think that this is one of those extreme cases, but...
Trying the shooting?
Yeah.
Oh.
But I think that, that it's one of those cases that says, hey, you know, we need to make sure we're informing the citizenry as, as plainly as possible. And then, you know, no, no end of the city is, is without its issues. That's all.
Maybe your battery just died.
I'm just giving, I'm just...
All right. So, no end of the city is without its issues, and one that I had brought to my attention, besides the, the, the pothole patches on Wilson Boulevard, was the conditions that exist around certain commercial establishments, and I'll call them commercial, the more service industry, in the South End Shop... the South End Shopping Center. I think we have some issues, both in front of and behind the shopping center, of the activity that certain employment services unfortunately draw, and it is certainly becoming an issue, and has been an issue for, you know, other patrons and businesses in that center, that has a negative impact on them, and, you know, we certainly do everything we can to welcome these businesses in, to bring them into these shopping centers, and provide incentives, you know, it's important.
Is the issue loitering, is it littering, drugs?
I think that...
Because I know they've done a lot in terms of lighting in the rear, they put up cameras.
I think, I think that it's the activity...
Loitering, the folks at the day...
Lording's probably...
Labor Center?
Yeah. A loose, a loosely fair word for it, so, but I know it's having a negative impact. And then, you never get to get your hair cut in the city without being told a couple of issues, and the only thing I'll bring up is, it relates to the city park, and one is the insurmountable amount of bread that people throw into the lake, and the problems that cause...
That's what most of the sludge is, on the bottom of the lake, is all that...
I've heard from at least half a dozen people this week, of the loaves that people, they don't even break it up, but it's just interesting, the amount of people that bring that issue up. And then the other is, you know, while they certainly appreciate the efforts we take for the tot lots and the smoke-free and things like that, the level of civility around these areas certainly keeps the families away from frequenting them, and I think that that comes with an issue, partly of enforcement, you know, having the adequability to enforce it to folks that just do not want to be civil within our parks usage. And I don't think that that is specific to city park, I think that I've heard it, you know, for Fairgrounds Park as well, and so...
Goes along with the Character Counts Initiative, maybe there's something that can do with parks in terms of trying to educate our citizens on how much character counts. Is that it?
That's what I got.
Thank you. Mr. Brubaker.
Yeah, last Thursday, I attended the Downtown Revitalization Strategies Workshop in Frederick, at the request of the mayor, who I believe is on the board of the Local Leaders Council, it's Smart Growth America, and also sponsored by Thousand Friends of Maryland. One of the moderators was Governor Glenn Denning and his staff from Smart Growth, and the mayor of Frederick, Randy McClement, made a presentation, and staff members of Frederick, I think there was an interesting dialogue. I won't go into it all right now, but...
What was the biggest takeaway, Marty?
Well, the biggest takeaway is, is that I think we're doing a lot of things that they're doing, but we, you know, we're operating, number one, in a different economic climate, and with a different market, so we can try to use their strategies, but I think we have to put a Hagerstown twist on them.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's all.
Well, I just want to congratulate, first of all, the Hagerstown Suns for being the champions of the second half in the Northern Division of South Atlantic League. I went out and threw the first pitch last Wednesday, which was really fun, and it's always great to see folks at the ballpark. It makes me want to do everything we can to keep the deal in Fredericksburg from happening. So, whether that's getting folks together on a local level, and even at the state level, because I really do think this is an opportunity to retain a business, not just in Washington County or Hagerstown, but in the state of Maryland, and I think there are folks at the state who really want to help us in that endeavor. I do think we should, if we're going to have that discussion, look at the stadium we have, and, you know, that's an asset we already have. Maybe we'll have that discussion in the future. I know everybody's tired of talking about stadiums, but I'm not. I'm going to keep talking about it. Also, today, I went to the ribbon-cutting of Bester Elementary School. I cannot tell you how proud those students are, and the teachers, and the principal, the administrators, the school system, of what that facility means. Dr. Hardings, who is the president of the Board of Education, made some remarks, and he said, "We built a building. It's the kids, and the teachers, and administrators, and the parents, and the community who create a school." And I asked some teachers, when I was there, you know, what's the response been from the kids at the school, and they said, "It's just completely different. The kids have a different attitude, they behave differently, they're beaming with pride and excitement about coming to school and learning," and I think that's what the effect of having a brand-new school there does for the community. So I look forward to seeing all the good things happening there. Just a reminder that earlier today, I went to City Park and declared September Citizen Preparation Month, or Preparedness Month, in connection with the event we're about to go to, the Day of Remembrance. This Friday, there's a lot of stuff happening in Hagerstown this weekend, starting with Zumba Fest on Friday in the Central Lot, so the after-work, right? People can come down and get their zumba on. On Saturday morning is Color Splash at Fairgrounds Park. In the afternoon is Porch Fest on South Prospect Street, so hopefully, I think that's their second annual Porch Fest, and so it's now an annual event, and I look forward to seeing that happen. Art in the Park is also, Saturday at 1:00 p.m., the Grace Academy Children's Theater will be performing at the band show. The Hispanic Fest happens at the Fairgrounds at 2:00 p.m. on Sunday. Also on Sunday, I don't know if, well, it's the Sister City affiliation is having a picnic. I'm going to be there to talk about my recent trip to Vaisal. I'm sure they would welcome anyone who would want to come, and they would love for you to join the Sister City affiliation. I think it's a potluck, so if you're planning on coming, maybe bring a dish or something. It's at City Park, it's in the pavilion, behind the band show, and that starts at 4:00 p.m. And that's all I got. It's been another great week in Hagerstown. We are adjourned.